Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you here on another beautiful day in paradise. Uh, roll call Ms. Mekus.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
And Mr. Manley?
Here.
We would have our presentation of colors by Washington Parish High School in the direction of Chief Doug Gates, uh, pledge by Mr. Dabo Graves, and prayer by Mr. Greg Manley. If you'd like to stand, please do so. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, just how awesome and loving and merciful God you are, Heavenly Father. We just thank you for the blessings you give us each and every day, and we thank you for the opportunity to gather as a school board, Heavenly Father, and just pray for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that affect our school system. And Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for, uh, each and every member that's here today, and thank you for these young people that's come forth and, uh, uh, with the military and, uh, presented our flag and colors for us, Heavenly Father. We just have so much to be thankful for in our school district. We just lift that up to you and praise and glorify you, Heavenly Father. Thank you so much for our salvation, and also we pray in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Guys, I need a motion for approval of the minutes for January fourteenth.
Can I make that a motion?
Have a motion.
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? And there's none, thank you. Before we approve the agenda, we need to amend the agenda by adding item number seven under Business and under number three, under Permission to Be Added. I need a motion to amend.
We approve the amended agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to amend in a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion passed. Now we'll approve the agenda as amended. Have a motion.
I move.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. For Business, Mr. Manley, we have a card today?
Yes, we have a comment card on item number four.
Okay. We'll do the personnel report. Mr. Gas.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Uh, we're quickly approaching that time of year. It's hard to believe that we're already starting to turn our attention to next school year. So, uh, with that, I'd just like to, uh, inform the board that Mr. Thompson will be opening two director positions in the coming days. As Director of Elementary Schools currently held by Ms. Willard in her interim position, and Dr. Gail Autry has announced her retirement, and we will be, uh, opening the Director of Student Support Services. Just wanted to let you know. That's what I've got, Mr. Manley.
Thank you. What item, Mr. Manley?
Item number four.
Item number four, okay. All right, item number one, Presentation of the 2025 Building Bridges Grant Winners. Chris Kelly, Westmaner Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I'm excited here to, uh, to announce that we have five winners in this year's grant. The Westmaner West Washington Chamber and our Adopted School Committee are presenting five checks to area teachers today as part of the Building Bridges Grant. This grant program is in its second year and had double the amount of applicants as the previous year. Five teachers participated in a competitive application project, process ultimately won. They are Shelby Hardy from Clayburn Elementary, Samantha Murphy from Shady Grove Elementary, Stuart Feckel from Sterlington Middle School, Christina Peters from Good Hope Middle School, and Amy Katie from Westmaner High School. We are so thrilled to be able to provide this funding today, and it is in partnership with our partners at Pattern Energy. So congratulations to our winners, and we are proud to, to present them with a check today.
Bring them back up here and get a check back.
Thank you, Chris, and congratulations to each one of our teachers. Item number two, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Year Ended June 30th, 2024. Marjorie Williamson of Allen Green and Williamson CPAs.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm here to present the, um, annual financial report and the single audit report for the year ended June 30th of 2024. And I gave you a summary of the reports. You also have copies of both of the reports. There's two, uh, reports, but I'm gonna go over the summary, and if you have any questions, uh, just stop me as I go through it. So, on the first page, um, you all should have a, a summary of the reports. The first page, um, our audit is a financial and compliance audit. Um, I'm gonna go over the financial part first. Uh, we did, uh, the independent auditor's report, uh, includes the opinion, and we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which that's the best opinion you can get. And, um, for the financial results, I have a summary attached to the first page. If you turn to the second page, uh, in that summary, the first section is the government-wide statements, and the government-wide statements are not statements that you're, um, accustomed to, to looking at. These are, these, these statements are on a full accrual method, and it includes capital assets and all your debt. So I just wanted to point out two things, uh, from those statements. Uh, the first is the other post-employment liability. Um, that is based on an actuarial study by an actuary that the school board contracts with, uh, to come up with that estimate, and that is an estimate of the amount, uh, that will be paid to people who are presently retired and to, um, future retirees. So, you actually pay that on a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning this is for health insurance, and you just pay the premiums that are due for retirees and for employees as they become due. There is no trust or anything set aside. So, the other post-employment benefits liability is 207 million. And, um, that is, um, no different than other school districts, uh, in the state. Our school districts have that large liability, and most of them do not have a trust set aside, uh, to pay that. It's on a pay-as-you-go basis. Uh, the net pension liability, that is your share of the state retirement system liability. Uh, the teachers' retirement and the school employees, that's the school board's share of that liability, which is, uh, 204 million. The next section is the general fund, and I just pulled out, um, a couple of things on the general fund. Uh, the first one is the ad valorem tax. That revenue was 27.3 million in 2024. I also gave you six years of information, starting with 2019. 2019 was the year before the pandemic, so that kinda gives you an idea of what it was before, and then during, and then we're kind of coming out of the, that period. So, the, the MFP was 117.9 million, and then all other revenue is 14.3. And included in that 14 million, there's 5.6 million that you got from the state for stipends, uh, that were paid out to employees. Uh, and 2.5 million of that 14 million is money you received for prior year Medicare, Medicaid claims. Those are kinda slow in, in paying, and it's usually two to three years before you get reimbursed. So, overall, revenue for the general fund is 159.7 million, and below that, you'll see expenditures of 162.8 for the general fund, and then, um, below that are your transfers in and out of the general fund. And the biggest part of that is transfer of indirect cost, and that's where, uh, federal grants are actually paying the general fund for the cost of administering the grants. So, um, the indirect cost, you'll see transferring was 3.9 million, and of that amount, 3 million of that came from the education stabilization grant. So, if you look across, you'll see, like, for the past three years, uh, that number has been, um, a lot higher than it was before, and that's because of the education stabilization grant. They've been paying that, they paid that 3 million to the general fund. Uh, that percentage that that grant paid is a lot higher than what the other grants, like Title I or Special Ed pay. So, I just, uh, wanted you to be aware that, that program is closing, and actually closed in September of '24, so that $3 million is gonna be a lot less for 2025. So, at the bottom of the page, the increase in the general fund for the year was actually an increase of 405,000. Uh, if you go to the next page, uh, the, I have the beginning fund balance for the general fund and the ending fund balance. So your ending fund balance was 22.6 million. And the school board policy is that fund balance should be between 10 and 15% of what your total expenditures are. And if you'll look across, you'll see percentage of expenditures, uh, for this year, past year it was 14%, and it's fluctuated between 14 and 16% over that six years. The unassigned fund balance means the, part of the fund balance that's not restricted, committed for anything else, and that amount was 17.1 million, which was actually 11% of, uh, expenditures. Okay, on the next page, I have the sales tax funds, the M&amp;O fund, the Westhaas sales tax, and then the 95 and the 68 sales tax. The first one is the M&amp;O. Uh, that one, uh, in sales tax, you got 10.6 million. The expenditures in that fund were 9.1. Um, and your increase for the year was 2.6 million. So you had a beginning fund balance of 28.7. Your ending fund balance is 31.4 in that fund. That, um, fund balance is committed, uh, for instructional programs, salaries and benefits, uh, capital improvements, and mandated costs, and there are percentages assigned for each one of those. The West Washita sales tax, uh, the sales tax was 16.7 million. That all other revenue is mostly interest. Expenditures, 9.2 million, and you'll see that those expenditures have actually, actually increased in 2024 compared to the other years because you do have several construction projects there that are, um, in progress. Then there's transfers to debt service. Uh, this fund actually transferred almost 6 million to debt service funds to pay the principal and interest on the bonds. So your increase in West Washita was 2.9 million. Beginning fund balance was 26.2, so your ending is, uh, 29.1 million. And that, uh, fund balance is restricted for construction and operations in West Washita. Um, the next page is the 68 and the 95 sales tax. These funds are used, uh, for salaries and benefits. So, the sales tax, um, for those funds was 35.9 million. Uh, you actually paid out basically what was taken in. So, um, your beginning fund balance was 13.1, and your ending was 13.5. And I have a note down there that if you look at overall, over that, that six years, uh, sales tax has actually increased about 38.7% over that time period. The next page is school food service. Uh, that one is, um, for the revenue, 1.7 million comes from MFP because part of the MFP does go to school food service. Then there were some, uh, fees or some sales, uh, for food service. Then the biggest part is the 11.6 million in federal revenue. So, overall, revenue for school food service was 13.7, expenditures 13.2. Uh, so actual increase was a little, was over 500,000 that the fund actually increased. And the beginning fund balance was 12.6, the ending was 13.1. And included in that 13.1, uh, 7.6 million of that, um, is an equipment reserve. And then at the bottom, I just pulled out, uh, the main federal, uh, grants that the school board receives. Child nutrition, uh, it's actually increased over that six years. Uh, Title I pretty much has stayed pretty much the same. The special ed programs, uh, 5.2 million. The education stabilization, for 2024, that amount was 24.7 million. So, over the, over the four years of that grant, so far, it's been 69.9 million. And that grant actually runs through September, so there will be some in 2025. So your total federal revenue for the year 2024 was 50.5. If you go back to the first page, um, the other part of the audit is the compliance, and that is the single audit, which is the small report that you have. We audited one federal program, which was the education stabilization program, and our opinion on that program was unmodified, which, that's a clean opinion, and, um, the best one you can get, and we had no findings, uh, to report. This, um, the annual comprehensive financial report is submitted to two organizations, uh, to the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials, and they go through and do a review of the report, and they award a certificate of excellence in financial reporting if the report meets their standards. And I think the school board has actually received that award for the past 36 years. So this report was also submitted to them. Any, any questions?
We thank you. Appreciate all the hard work in doing this, and certainly would like to see the positive results.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, uh, thank you to, to Ms. Marjorie and her team. They put in a lot of work. They're here long, long hours for many days, especially Regina and her team. Uh, I know, uh, I've said this before, it, it's the whole district, and she'll be the first one to tell you that, that's able to, to do what we're supposed to do and, and get reports like this, and I'm certainly proud of them. And Regina, thank you, and again, your team. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I'd just like to say I am very proud of that last line on the first page, the no findings reported. Uh, we do put a lot of long hours and a lot of work, and we're, we're not only audited, um, in this fiscal audit, we have a lot of other, um, reports that are, that are going on at the same time, especially circulated around the SRF funding. So I would like to say thank you to my team, um, my accountants in purchasing, they, they really keep us going every day, and, and over the last few years, we've had a lot of extra work that they've taken on, um, so we can kinda see the light now, but I'm, I'm very proud that even with that extra load, that we've, we've maintained our excellence.
I was gonna say this at, at the end in my report, but I think it's appropriate for me to, uh, mention it now. We received word yesterday, you know, uh, we got our bond rating from Standard and Poor's, and, and honestly, we were a little concerned because a lot of districts, their bond ratings had been lowered, and we were kinda told to prepare, uh, for ours, but we found out yesterday that we maintained a double A minus bond rating, um, and it was told to us that the reason we did that was the stability, the financial stability of the district, and I think that's indicative of what we heard today. So, we're proud of that and excited, uh, that we're able to keep that because that impacts, uh, the community and what our, what our supporters and community members pay to help support our schools, so we're proud of that. So, thanks.
Moving on to item number three, financial report for December 31st, 2024. Ms. Mekus?
You have in your packet the financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2024, uh, in the general fund. And the general fund will end the period with 20.8 million. In fund balance, you'll see right below that, that 77.9% of where we were at this time last year. The reason for that is the timing and the distribution of state stipends. Uh, this year, we, prior year, we received all the money upfront. We distributed half in the fall and half in the spring, which meant at this time of the year, we had about 2.7 million dollars more in our fund balance that was waiting to be distributed. This year, because of guidelines issued by the state, we received all of that money in the fall, and we issued all of that money in the fall. So that's where you're seeing a little bit of a difference in the fund balance. In District One M&amp;O, we're ending the period with 30.3 million. That is 108% of where we were at this time last year. Uh, I will say, just a note, over the last few months, we have started to see our sales tax revenue level out. Instead of it being 100 or 107%, we're looking at more like 98, 94, which is not bad, but just a note that we're seeing some of those numbers level out. Uh, that could recover by the end of the year. That's an unknown, but we'll keep an eye on that. Any questions?
None here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration and approval of the 2025-26 Westhaas Parish School Board Calendar Recommendation. Mr. Jason Thompson.
Good afternoon, Board. On Tuesday, January 28th, the Calendar Committee, uh, met here at the central office, uh, to discuss the 25-26 school calendar. I think for the most part, everything was fairly standard and in line with this current school year's calendar. Although I would point out a couple of things. If you'll notice, under August of '25, uh, school is set to begin on Monday, the 4th. As I mentioned already, I think fall break, spring break, Christmas break, those again fall in line pretty much with, um, this current school year's calendar. We did add or, or recommend to add a date. If you'll look in March of 26th, uh, you'll see on Friday, the 6th, there, a third virtual day. Uh, this current school year, we had two virtual days, and hearing from our teachers and employees, pretty much district-wide, uh, they were really grateful to get those workdays, uh, in order to be able to do work in their classrooms. They also use those days to, uh, have parent conferences, uh, because those first two fall in line, for the most part, after a nine weeks grading period. Uh, so they requested a third, and you'll see reflected on your calendar there that we have, uh, potentially added a third date there on March 6th, uh, for you to consider and, and hopefully approve. Again, I think, um, for the most part, everything else falls in line with this current year's calendar, uh, so I'm here today to ask for your consideration and approval, um, of this.
If anybody's got any questions for him?
I like this one sheet, Jason. That's good. You gotta consolidate everything.
Just for you, Mr. Manley.
Any questions about our schedule for the upcoming year? Okay, we have a card, Ms. Manley. If you'd like to come forward. You have three minutes.
Um, before y'all approve the calendar, I would like to, uh, propose to you, uh, to do so with the exclusion of the three virtual days. Um, just because we can doesn't mean we should. Uh, if you're not familiar with how they worked out, um, this year, teachers sent home an assignment, and, uh, if the teach, if the students didn't, uh, complete it, they were considered absent. Um, and according to most of the school's Facebook or Instagram accounts, the assignments weren't due for a week. Um, I believe this is because some of the teachers had to spend a week chasing down the students who didn't do the virtual work, wasting their time and making it more work on them to have students make up the assignment. Also remember that not all the students have internet at home, and not all of them can take their Chromebooks home, um, and the little ones just received a worksheet or a packet to, uh, complete in lieu of a seven-hour day, and I feel like our kids deserve better. Um, most caregivers hate virtual days. We home, we don't homeschool for a reason. Um, it's most likely a workday for them, and they don't have time to make sure their kids are actually doing their schoolwork all day long. Um, in general, these types of days are a huge interruption to the workforce in our community, um, but even the parents who don't mind the virtual days because they like to sleep in, wish there were options for children to get instruction if they don't understand the material. Um, a lot of teachers aren't fans of the virtual days. Um, some of them didn't send anything home for students because they do not think they are effective for kids. Uh, I'm aware that these days are designed as workdays for teachers and for students not to lose those required classroom minutes, um, but on the contrary, many schools are excusing several days' worth of classroom minutes by ignoring absences on skip days, which many have already had three this year, uh, the day before fall break, the day before Christmas, the day before Thanksgiving, and I'm sure the day before spring break will be the fourth. Um, I did speak with personnel yesterday, um, which they're under the impression that the, um, skip days are strictly student-led, but in reality, um, uh, many schools highly discourage kids to come on these days. It's frowned upon, and parents are judged harshly for sending them on these days, not to mention the last several days on the schedule after awards programs. If you do approve this calendar with teacher workdays included, we'd rather them just be a day off for the kids where they might learn something new by us taking them somewhere or even going on a walk outside exploring. And then last, I did talk with Mr. Thompson yesterday. If you do go through with the virtual days for students, please insist on a feeding program being implemented on these days for children who rely on school meals to be fed.
Thank you. We have a motion approved. The calendar is presented.
I so move.
In a second.
A second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, yes?
Discussion.
Have a question? Go ahead.
First of all, let me say, uh, thanks to, uh, our staff and those who were.
First of all, let me say, uh, thanks to, uh, our staff and those who worked on the, uh, school calendar, uh, to present to the board. Uh, and I know it takes a lot of work because I used to be in, uh, counseling the district. Secondly, I want to thank the, uh, parent who did come to share with us today. Oftentimes, uh, let me speak for myself, that information that I get, I get it without having the opportunity to sort of go over it and get the information that I need. Question, do we have any parents that serve? How many?
Yeah, we had two parents, one from the east side, representing the east side, and one representing the west side. And they brought, uh, up several things to the committee that were discussed that I thought were helpful.
Did anyone discuss the virtual days or?
Yeah, we did. There was one concern that was brought up about, uh, the, I think, and Curtis, if, if I'm speaking out of turn, let me know, about the, uh, amount of work that was sent home on the first, on the first of the two virtual days. And then, uh, I think, uh, you know, Curtis had some conversation amongst the committee where that's been since corrected.
I guess there were two other things that Ms. Bendel, I think, mentioned that sort of caught my ear. One is that all students do not have, uh, was this Wi-Fi or? But I know they have computers because the district provides those. Am I correct, Mr. Geis?
Yes, sir. We're one-to-one, but, and, and we're aware of that, and that's one issue we worked through. So the schools are aware, and they have other alternatives. It's not just a virtual, I mean, we call it a virtual day, but it, you know, pen and paper type exercises are sent home. And I'll just follow up with, with what Jason said. This is new to us this year. I know the first day, uh, first teacher workday, student virtual day, was a little bumpy. We knew that. We made some corrections, and we'll continue to do that, uh, to make it the best we can for the kids.
And a second, uh, comment that was made as, as of interest to me was that there are some kids, obviously, we know that, uh, from our church, uh, that kids don't have food. They rely on the, the lunches that they receive from, uh, a school lunch program, uh, to be able to eat. I found that out as the church pastor, you know, we have individuals who give donations to our church, and we use that for that purpose, to help feed those kids when they're not in school. Uh, I, I just wanted to sort of, that is, that was of concern to me, those two things. And, uh, maybe next year, I, I, I would take a little, uh, greater note and, uh, get more information leading up to our calendar because there are some concerns that I have. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Geis, you want to kind of elaborate a little bit on this virtual day, then why we did it and what it all?
So this came, as many of you know, not only me, but a lot of the directors and supervisors sitting in this office. We spent a lot of time going around visiting with our employees, visiting with, uh, our students. I was at Woodlawn Middle, uh, this morning, visiting with our student council and some others. And overwhelmingly, last year, the year before, uh, the teachers asked for just some time. I, I, I don't think people really understand how much work are on our teachers. And in the days that they do have without students is usually up listening to us in some type of PD or doing PD at their schools. And they said, so I said, as the new superintendent, as coming in as a former HR, what can I do? What can we do as a district to help you? Mr. Geis, we need a day or two where we can just catch up, where we can have parent conferences, where we can plan, where we can do the things we need. And that's where this came from. It came from requests from our, our employees. I, I get emails daily. In fact, I got one yesterday from teachers that I, I just hadn't told you how much, you just don't know what this means to us this day. So that's what we've heard overwhelmingly. Uh, I appreciate Ms. Bendel's comments. Uh, the issue Reverend McCoy about the food, we haven't thought about that. Uh, that could be something I could talk to Ms. Carrario about. We certainly provided meals during COVID, but it, I mean, that, I'm not gonna sit here and say that's easily done, and I'm not even sure it's doable. I know Jolynn is in our office watching, and I'm sure we'll have a conversation. But it's something we can look at as far as moving forward. But that's, that's where this came from, the idea, and it has been overwhelmingly, um, accepted and, and, and by our faculties across the district.
Last thing I would say, moving forward, if I'm here next year, that, you know, uh, if that's an issue relative to the calendar, uh, even if it's a minute issue because something that's minute to me may be major to someone else. You know, I would certainly like to hear about it prior to the board meeting as opposed to at the board meeting. You know, I, like I said, I'll have some reservation, but I do understand, uh, how tedious and difficult it is to try to put all this together and make everybody happy. And it's, it's almost.
Well, as you know, Reverend McCoy, I don't really understand what issues you're talking about. I didn't know there were any, but we.
I was just referring to what was just mentioned.
Right. Uh, you know, the state dictates our minutes, it's about 63,720 a year that we have to make. So any tweaks we make back and forth, we've got to either add or subtract somewhere. So this calendar, Mr. Thompson, I don't know if he mentioned or not, provides, I think, four weather days moving into next year. I know a lot of you ask about that, and hopefully we never have to use them. But, um, a lot of times, if you subtract a day and you want to give a day for a holiday, uh, you've got to figure out a way to make it work. So it is a tedious process. Nobody likes to come to school earlier in August, and they certainly don't like to stay into June. So that's just some of the give and take we have to do in developing this calendar.
Any other comment? We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Motion carry.
Thank you, Board.
Item number five, construction renovation projects. Mr. Hamhill?
Good afternoon, Board. In front of you have your handout for all the, uh, projects that we have going on. I think this last month, we had some good construction meetings. Uh, we, we were working a lot. But today, uh, that seems to come to a halt. So that's just, this time of year with the weather we have, that, that's what happens. So, um, if you have any particular questions, uh, I'll be pleased to answer anything that you may have as you go through that. I will say, on the back sheet, I got a email from Rice Gregory concerning Sterlington Middle School, where we stand at right now. Me and Rice are planning on going to Sterlington Middle next Tuesday to update our punch list items, uh, to move forward with that, so. That's what I have. You got a question, Reverend McCoy?
Yeah, just, uh, a couple things. One is, uh, the Richwood, uh, Pavilion connected to the library.
Richwood Middle?
No, Richwood High School. Is there any indication as to when they're going to?
Yeah, me and TBA had a meeting with Womack last week, uh, telling them our concerns with getting these sites cleaned up.
Yeah.
They did get all the drainage put in, but again, it, it gets wet, and they're gonna make a, a bigger mess. I, I was down there last week, and I seen where they had tried to make it where all the water will come out of that area so they can continue to, uh, improve that site, so. But as it gets wet, then they gonna make a bigger mess than what they have, so that, that's what we have. But we did have a meeting with them and, uh, expressed our urgency on, on getting these sites cleaned up and.
Thank you.
Completed.
Thank you.
Have we started our two projects at Swartz Lord yet? My two projects at Swartz Lord?
Had started the fence. Uh, they're supposed to start after this rain moves out on the bus pad.
I appreciate, I, I, I want to let you know, I know, I appreciate, I know you come and go on your.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, well, that, that is my job. That's what I get paid to do. But I'd like to thank Tabby and Adam for the job they do on putting, uh, our updates on our social media. And I know y'all see those on Facebook and on your hand, uh, your Scoo, uh.
Yes, I do. Great.
Mr. Geis, so, yeah, I appreciate them.
One, one other question there. On that tract at Richwood High School, they have it, uh, they haven't finished that, have they?
Hmm, I think the weather may be.
I went out there yesterday. They're, they've got to spray that top layer.
What color is that going to be?
It's terracotta, which is, uh, it was a color collected by the, uh.
That, the principal.
Principal.
It's the closest thing we have to red.
Right. She asked me that yesterday, and I said, I don't know. At the school board meeting tomorrow, I ask that question, and I'll let you know because I think it's supposed to be terracotta or red, so that's exactly. Well, she saw it black and was saying, are they through? I said, yeah, I don't think so, but I'll ask, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, they'll have a finish. Go over that, then they'll stripe it and be done with it, weather permitting. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Item number six, consideration approval of change order for bid 11-25 Westminster High School's tennis courts.
Good afternoon, Board. Um, this change order deals with the excavation and hauling off of, uh, site trash and bad dirt and trees that were buried under the site of the new tennis court. We had a home that was demoed a couple of years ago, and, um, and so, uh, when this contractor, Watson Construction, came in to, uh, to lay that pad for the new tennis court, he encountered that. And so, uh, so we're asking for approval on that change order in the amount of $60,669.
I so move. Second.
A motion in a second to make the changes on this change order. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No, there's none. Thank you, Jerry. Number seven, consideration approval for the bid floor for bid number 1625 Old Miles Property. Mr. Peters?
Um, I'm requesting the Board set a bid floor for this property sale. And the, the Board, um, y'all can choose to set this, uh, price. We put this property out for bid three separate times. Once at full appraised value, once at 85%, and then once at 80%. We have not received any bids, uh, to this point. And so today, I'm recommending the Board set the bid floor at $150,000. That's roughly, uh, $11,700 for, uh, each acre there on that tract of land, just over 12 acres.
I move that, uh, we accept the bid floor of $150,000 for the mile property in the Sterlington area, based on Jerry's recommendation.
Second.
A motion to set the bid at $150,000. In a second, any questions, comments? All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No? Motion carry.
Mr. Peters, did we ever get appraisal on that, uh, Old Miles property at Swartz?
The, uh, the Old Miles property?
The Old Miles.
Yes, sir.
We need to get appraisal on it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we used that appraisal to, uh, to begin the bid process.
I think he's talking about the property on 139 next to Starlight Baptist Church.
Yes, sir, we do have an appraisal on that one. Um, no, sir, not yet. Um, but, uh, but we can get that permission at a future board meeting.
Request one by Star Baptist Church.
Any other questions? All right, number, evaluation of bids, item 1825, copy paper.
Um, Board members, this, this bill will open, uh, this Friday, February 14th at 2:00 PM. Um, I am requesting the Board to, uh, to go ahead and approve the lowest responsive bidder, um, for that copy paper.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Motion carry. Permission to bid.
All right, we have bid number 22-25. Um, that's the old Sterlington Middle School, uh, property. And a budget on that being 1.5 million dollars. I'm requesting the Board, um, grant permission for a public bid on this property. And the full appraised value of the property is, uh, $1,500,000. The bid will require that the highest responsive bidder to bid at least 100% of the appraised value, um, on the property.
I so move. We put the Sterlington Middle School out for permission to bid with a minimum bid of $1.5 million per Jerry's recommendation.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any questions or any comments? All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No? There's none. Motion carry.
All right, we have bid, uh, 25-25. The central elementary restroom renovations and enclosed walkway. Funding source being West Washdaw Sales Tax with a, um, budget of $1.7 million. Um, just a little note, due to some unforeseen circumstances with the requirement of a Transformers relocation and the extended time that would be required, which would then in turn add significant cost to the project, we've decided to adjust the scope of that project, um, to no longer enclose the walkway and instead extend, uh, the canopy. So I'm asking the Board, uh, that we amend the permission to bid, uh, to be central elementary restroom renovations and canopy.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yep.
Have a motion in second to grant permission to bid. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No? None. Motion carry. Stage curtains, last motion.
All right, lastly, bid, uh, 26-25, um, stage curtains. Uh, have a couple of funding sources, um, for that, uh, project. One being, uh, east, um, uh, our east side bond money, and then also timber sales money. The budget being $65,000. Um, requesting permission to bid on those stage curtains for three of our schools, Washdaw Junior High, Jack Hayes, and Riverbend Elementary. Washdaw Junior High and Jack Hayes will be paid through East Side Bond, and Riverbend is going to be using live, utilizing their timber fund allotment.
Have a motion to grant permission to bid on stage curtains.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carry. Thank you, Jerry. Guys, the travel forms for the conference coming up toward the end of this month are in your box in Sherry's office. Y'all can pick those up when you need them. A little pink shirt to remind y'all, today is February 11th. Guys, if you hadn't got your flowers or your cake or whatever you normally do for your wife, you might want to get that taken care of before the 14th. So that's all I have.
Just a couple of things. Uh, I think, Board, I've, I've informed you tomorrow, State Superintendent Cade Brumley and Assistant Superintendent Trey Foles will be in the district. He'll be visiting Claiborne Elementary, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, visiting some classes with a learning walk and then having some debrief with us, uh, when they leave. So we're always happy to have a State Superintendent in the district. Uh, February 17th is President's Day holiday. Will be followed by District PD Day next Tuesday. And we're also gonna have the area-wide emergency drill, if you hear anything related to that. This was postponed from an earlier date due to weather, and, uh, Washdaw High School will be hosting that. That will be all law enforcement and first responder involvement across the area, uh, involved in that. So Mr. Fremont's been working with that, um, and them to get that organized, so just want to make you aware. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn? In a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.